Hello. How long have you been here, sir? There's going to be... You know me. I'm a dude. How you doing there? Yeah. We're going to do... What you look there?
Oh. I think I started talking, but I didn't want to say hello. I don't know if I did or not. Yeah, yeah, it just feel like...
Let me know when you're ready. I'm on you.
I would check into it. Worst they could say is no. Josh, I'll tell you the story. Okay. Justin, I need to talk to Justin. All people need to come to the meeting.
Presentations and...
This thing is so good.
Yeah, I'll give that to you. Do you want it right now? Do you want after?
Just everybody just come alive. This thing is just... Oh, my God, you should just... How you doing? Good, too. Oh, here you go. I was just talking about how great everything was. Now you coming over here. I'm just joking. I'm just being bad. I'm so busy. I'll be... This was pathetic. I got to thank you later from her family.
Well, it's so good. Good, did you?
Because I have it so many. It's important. I have them. If I saw them.
You know her... You know her mother?
Yeah.
What is that?
Yeah.
I will always be interested in this. But it's all... Obviously, well...
We're going to go ahead and get started. Now, we have a lot to talk about tonight. First, I'm going to turn it over to Alcade and Fay. I think Nancy's going to lead it. Before they get started, sort of the... One of the first things that we decided to do at the start of this year was we looked at the number of federal grants, things that we applied for. Our success rate wasn't the highest, and so we made the decision early on that we needed some more firepower in DC. And so we brought on a very high-powered lobbying firm in DC. Had been very helpful. When I go up to DC, I really do appreciate it. But I will turn it over to their team and talk about some of the things that we're going to apply for and a better way for us to win. Over to you.
Thank you so much. We first, we want to thank you for the opportunity to get to meet with you. We've had the pleasure of meeting with the mayor and participating with a lot of staff activity so far, and it's a delight to get to meet you. And it's such a pleasure to see a governmental entity that's working because, as you probably heard, there was briefly a Speaker of the House today chosen, who is now dropped out. So we're still at a standstill here in Washington. So what a pleasure to see a well-working governmental entity like you all. I thought first and foremost, it would be helpful for us to just introduce ourselves. And I have with me my team here. I have... You'll see on your PowerPoint a little background on all of us. Kevin Fay, who serves as our Vice Chairman and CEO, is, as we speak, he is really well-known within the administration and around the world as a global environmental policy advocate. And he is right now in Nairobi, Kenya, for the United Nations Environmental Program that's happening this week on behalf of the global food cold chain that we run out of our offices. I also have with me Yasmin Albazas, who is a partner in the firm. Yasmin, you want to wave hello? And who is a UVA grad and has her master's from Georgetown. And Kayla Joyner, who is an old Duminian University grad. And we are... And also with our team, we have Bob Mathias, who, as you can see by his background, was key at the City of Virginia Beach for almost 40 years and continues to be. We're delighted to have him as a part of our team. And I am the President and Chief Operating Officer at Alcaldin Fay. I led the account, our account, with the City of Virginia Beach. We represented them for 30 years and worked very closely with Bob then. And so we are a known team, and we are really excited about working with you all. I...
Oh, you're... How many difficulties do I have? My goodness, sir. Yeah, thank you.
A little bit about the firm. We have been around... We are one of Washington's oldest firms. We are in our 50th year. None of us are in our 50th year here, but it was founded by Hector Alcaldin in '73. He still is our Chairman. And we were one of the first firms, lobbying firms, to specialize in public body municipality representation and have done that since the beginning. Our first client was the Port of Tampa, and we've had them for 50 years, and we have grown from there. So we've really learned the processes on how to help municipalities find federal government funding, working on policy initiatives, appropriations, federal grants. And we have a firm of 17 staffers, professional and administrative. We've been nationally recognized as one of the top 10 lobbying firms in the country. One of the unique aspects of having been in business so long, I think, is that we really know the process and pride ourselves on if a client has an issue that we haven't handled before, we have done enough similar things that we always know how to get... We know how to accomplish the mission on behalf of our clients. And that was what was noted in the ranking that we had was our longevity of client retention. We have strong bipartisan working relationships in both congressional and executive branch relationships. We've shown on page five a number of areas that we focus on, mainly on infrastructure. But we do... We have key environmental clients, commerce, science, technology, finance. Because of our longevity also, we know political appointees in almost all the agencies, too. These long-term relationships extend into the agencies. And we, in meeting with staff, we've been down there now to the city twice, and we are looking to further evaluate the city's federal agenda. We've gotten our marching orders on some policy priority development, and we will look to coordinate your entire federal agenda and look for building the city image in Washington, which includes scheduling in-person meetings up here. We're located in Arlington, just about a 10-minute drive to the Hill, and would like to welcome any and all of you when you are coming into town, either through plans that we have helped to make for you or just coming up here. Please feel free to use our offices at any time that you are here. We'd be delighted to host you. The priority issue areas we're looking at is continuing support. The city's community project funding appropriations, previously known as earmarks, are still pending because Congress, as you know, has not completed their work on the appropriation bills, although you have funding awaiting final passage in the appropriations bill. And there's a number of programs that are just rolling out that we're working with and looking to have the city engage in four additional funding opportunities that have been a result of the passage of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, the Inflation Reduction Act. And in those packages, there are a number of coastal resiliency efforts. We've just worked very closely with the city on its submission of the Reconnecting Neighborhoods application and helped develop support from the congressional delegation and also worked with the agencies up here, with the OD and others, as well as working closely with city staff. Under Public Safety Programs, we're looking and focusing on Department of Justice efforts, gun violence prevention, the Drone First Responder Program, Pilot Program. And we've worked very closely with the Economic Development Administration in the past on behalf of a number of clients and are looking for workforce training efforts and, you know, for various programs in the city. We're looking... We've listed on the next page some of the... On page eight, the funding that we're going after, in particular, it's, as I mentioned, earmarks, programmatic funding. And then what we really want to have a heavy focus on, as you mentioned, is the pursuit of federal grant opportunities. And to that end, we have just sent the... We've just sent city staff an extensive listing of federal grant opportunities that are coming out, being rolled out over the next year and are going to meet with city department heads to discuss which ones you feel you want to go after. And, you know, in some instances, we'll have like a six-month lead time. Sometimes with the grant applications, if you don't know about them well ahead of time, it's hard to pull all of the aspects of the grant together. On page nine, we've listed examples of some recent funding successes we've had for various clients. And then you'll see on page 10 what we've been doing so far and working with you all. And look forward to hearing other priorities that you will be sending to us. And we're looking to... We've been engaging in weekly calls with Jerry, and we're sending... We do a publication this week in Washington that we send to clients of four municipalities in particular. And we're monitoring a number of issues for you and looking, as I said, for grant opportunities. And then I couldn't close without saying, you know, a sales pitch as to why Alcaldin Fay and how delighted we are to be a part of your team. So with that, I'd love to open to questions. We were trying to work under a tight timeframe and would be delighted to answer any questions you may have.
Before there's any questions, as my mic turns back on, so the reason that this sort of started was I was at the mayor's conference, and every single mayor had a federal lobbyist with them. I was sort of by myself, and I didn't understand how DC worked. And so looking back at the Reconnecting Communities Grant that we applied for, I think, last year, we should have got that. I think there were some things with our application. So this is an investment, getting someone that's in DC, someone that knows how to operate. But I do believe that it will bear dividends. I know I'll be in DC in a few weeks. We'll connect about some more federal legislation. But there's... You have the IRA, you have the IIJA. There's a lot of things out there that we have to apply for. We have to know about it, and we have to have the TA to apply it. So Nancy and her team are going to help us with all of that.
I got a question. So, Alcade, if we are not successful in some of the applications, will you also provide recommendations for strengthening areas that we need help in or to get those additional dollars?
Yes. Thank you so much for bringing that up. We have found it very, very helpful and have worked closely enough with agencies that we have contacts in the agencies. But one of the things, the first thing that we recommended on the reconnecting grants is we said, let's first set up a meeting, which we did with the staff there, to talk about your application from last year, to see where the deficiencies were, because you should have gotten one last year. Quite frankly, you know, the need is great, and you guys provide a great example. And so... And I think that really helped focus the application for this year. And now there's... It's so much stronger on the community support side. And it was an all-team effort throughout the whole city. It was a full engagement on a weekly basis, and I think that you guys are really in a good position for securing the funds. But we do that regularly with the grants. Now, there are some times that there's a cone of silence, but usually, as a matter of fact, we were just looking up some additional grant opportunities to send to you all. And one of the things that we wanted to look at was we reached out to the federal office, and they said, well, we can't talk to you about this, but you can call the regional office contact. And so that's a very helpful way to improve upon performance. And what we talked about with Mayor Jones is also that we want, you know, the more we apply for, and if we have a long enough time period, it's not such a stressful indication because most of the notice of funding opportunities, except for those newest grants, will be very similar from year to year so that we can start writing and looking for building the support, you know, with the longer timeline.
All right. Thank you.
From counsel, do we have any more questions for Nancy and her team?
Well, I think it's a great idea, Mr. Mayor. I am looking forward to it because, of course, when you're connected with the powers that be and the people that, you know, the language is so similar in, you know, throughout the year, throughout the years. So to be able to be prepared for the grant as opposed to, you know, kind of just finding out at the end makes such a big difference. So welcome aboard.
Yeah. And you hit the nail on the head because so many opportunities are lost because you can't pull together all the support and all the parties that you need to. So we really think that looking at this from a strategic standpoint is going to really be helpful. And we are ready to jump in. I mean, we've already jumped in, and want to have... Our next meeting is going to be scheduled with, like I said, the department heads so that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Nancy. And the...
How many grants will you be helping us with this year?
You know, I don't know. It depends because it's a two-way street. We will give you... I mean, we have... I don't know. How many do we have on the list of 100? 75 to 100 on our list. Now, not all of those are going to be applicable. You know, we're throwing them out. We have them divided by agency. But we will do as many as you want to, but it also, it takes your staff time, too. And we just have to see. We give you guidance as to where we think you are best positioned, but that's going to take some dialogue back and forth. So hopefully, you know, I would love to see the city apply for, you know, I don't know, 15 would be a lot, but if we could do that, that would be great. It just depends on... There are some of the new programs that are coming out, too, are interesting. There are two parts. You have to first submit an application of interest, and then they decide if they're going to put you in the pool of being able to do the full application. Some of the new ones out of the Inflation Reduction Act and the ILJ, you know, and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. So some of those have, you know, tweaks. But... And then simultaneous to doing the federal agency applications, we will be working with you on developing community project funds that we very much hope that Congress is going to go forward with again next year because you've done well. And we will look for figuring out what the best project is to ask the congressional delegation to ask for. And that will be simultaneous to looking at agency funding. So that will be competitive, you know, we have the competitive grant, and then we have directed funding through the community project funding.
Pat, are you good? Thank you, Nancy. And just the last thing, Nancy, if we could find time next week for Jerry and me to talk about the second part of Jefferson Lab. I know we got the first parts done, but the second part is a sliding scale when it comes to the money. So if we could add that to the agenda for next week, that'd be great, or for two weeks.
Okay. We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor for all of us.
Could you keep us informed about the... Which ones we are going for and what the schedule is on that?
For me?
For her? I mean, I'm assuming they're acting as a conduit to try to do this. So I'd like to see what they... What we're planning to apply for and what the deadlines on them, what the schedule is. Because I've done a lot of grants when I was at Hampton University, and you have to know about them first, and then you have to plan for them. So I'd just like for us to have a schedule of the ones that you plan to apply for and what the status is at the time.
And Dr. Woodbury, make sure you can hear me okay.
Yeah.
The city administration has recently hired a grants manager. This has been a longtime goal.
Yes.
And so fairly soon, we'll have an opportunity to introduce that person to you. We've also created an alignment for that person's responsibilities within our Innovation Office, which we've previously briefed you about. And you're actually going to have a series of presentations this afternoon to further inform you about some of those initiatives that we're pursuing with Bloomberg Institute. But I'll be happy to provide the council with an overview of those prioritized grant initiatives that we know align with our strategic priorities and also align the work of council and the administration. So you can rely on us to also provide you with that information in concert with the work that we do with our federal lobbyists.
Okay.
I think next up, we're going to have Jerry Wilson is going to come and talk about some of our priorities for our state package this year.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And hopefully, on the... Back on the federal thing, I hope you've all been getting that this week in Washington, we've been forwarding them as they've been available. And there's some news in that, and in the back of it has some grant opportunities in it as well. So, okay, let's see now. So this year's legislative priorities draft, let me see. Which button? Nope, that's not the right button. Sorry, Kristen, which button? It's that. Yeah. That button. Okay. There we go. No, not up and down. Not up and down. All right. Not up and down. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the "about" session because most of you are already aware of a lot of this. I think there are a couple of things I wanted to highlight, which are the fact that the pre-filing period this year is very short. 10 days is ridiculously short. Typically, they start pre-filing bills at the beginning of July, and they go through the first Monday in December. So getting them all filed, once the council agrees on what we are going forward with, will be quite the feat. The next thing...
Jerry, can you explain pre-filing since we have new council members and everything?
Okay. So the way bills get filed in Virginia is every bill that goes before the General Assembly has to have a legislative patron. And they have, up until a certain point in December, they can file pretty much whatever whenever they want to. And they get them in the system at that point. And then every year, they will decide whether or not they have bill limits. They self-impose. Sometimes it's 15, sometimes 20, sometimes it's not... There is no limit. But once they decide how many bills they can carry, they may go back through everything that they have filed and decide which pieces of legislation are actually going forward. The House tends to give themselves bill limits more than the Senate does. So you may have senators carrying 30, 40 bills, whereas you might have a House patron who's limited to 15. Now, the upcoming session is the long 60-day session, so the bill limits tend to be a little bit higher, so it may not be an issue. But this always poses a little bit of a question for us in terms of just being able to make sure that the people in our delegation have capacity to carry bills, all the bills that they are asked to carry. Once they decide if they don't want to carry something, by virtue of the fact that they've already put it in the system, though, they can also transfer bills from patron to patron. But the key is getting it into the legislative information system so that it's there and it exists. Usually, once the pre-filing period ends, they do have a certain number. Typically, it's three that they can file up to the day the session starts, but it's just those three. And those tend to be usually very high-priority items for the person who's carrying the bill, something that happened between the end of the pre-filing period that no one knew was coming that needs to be addressed, kind of like the... That's like the emergency three. So that will be... Getting them all in in 10 days should be interesting for the elected people. The other piece of this that I want to mention is you all have probably heard at this point that there is a new General Assembly Building now open, and it is a delightful space. I have been to see it. I am so happy. But it is also a very, very huge space, and because of the nature of the new computer system and all of the new technology, there is going to be some changes to the telephone system and the email system. Many of you probably know, for example, if you email one of our senators, their email address is based on their district number. Well, all those have changed now. And so there's a lot of discussion about whether they're going to continue with that and just reassign everybody to their district or whether they're going to go to a name-based system similar to what the House uses. Same thing with the phone numbers in Richmond. They've all been attached to your district number. So your last four would be, if you're District 36, it would be 1036. But now that everyone has a new number, that could be kind of confusing. So we still don't know. The clerk of the House spoke to us when we went there for the tour, and he said they don't have it quite nailed down yet. So just be aware that if you call Monty Mason's old phone number or Senator Lox's old number, you could get an entirely different senator. Well, I'll let you know. That's one of the reasons why your draft legislative package says that this will be updated as it becomes available. Because... it's three, that they can file up to the day the session starts. But it's just those three and those tend to be usually very high priority items for the person who's carrying the bill, something that happened between the end of the pre-filing period that no one knew was coming that needs to be addressed, kind of like the, that's like the emergency three. So that will be, getting them all in in 10 days should be, should be interesting for the elected people. The other piece of this that I want to mention is you all have probably heard at this point that there is a new general assembly building now open and it is a delightful space. I have been to see it. I am so happy. But it is also a very, very huge space and because of the nature of the new computer system and all of the new technology, there is going to be some changes to the telephone system and the email system. Many of you probably know, for example, if you email one of our senators, their email address is based on their district number. Well, all those have changed now. And so there's a lot of discussion about whether they're going to continue with that and just reassign everybody to their district or whether they're going to go to a name-based system similar to what the House uses. Same thing with the phone numbers in Richmond. They've all been attached to your district number. So your last four would be, if you're District 36, it would be 1036. But now that everyone has a new number, that could be kind of confusing. So we still don't know, the clerk of the House spoke to us when we went there for the tour and he said they don't have it quite nailed down yet. So just be aware that if you call Monty Mason's old phone number or Senator Lox's old phone number, you could get an entirely different senator. Uh, well, I'll let you know. That's one of the reasons why your draft legislative package says that this will be updated as it becomes available because I just don't know. And someone asked me earlier what signee die meant and so I thought, I'm just going to say it. Signee die means with no plan to, to meet again. So that's all she wrote, that's all folks. I always hear it like a Bugs Bunny. That's all folks. Okay. So we have three proposed code changes this year and if you, there, two of them are very similar. The distinction being that they're written in such a way that one of them is very specifically for the city of Newport News and one of them would apply to any locality. The first one in your list is it allows all localities to add service charges for the purposes of taking care of private impoundments, which are bodies of water or dams. If you are in a locality where this is an issue, anything that fails could potentially impact your own water system. And of course, since we own the water, this is a very big issue for us. The difference between this one and the second one is it applies to all localities and it's a service charge. So it could be assessed on top of any other service charges that a locality may already charge. The second item is specifically for the city of Newport News and it would allow us to either apply a special tax or an assessment to a property where there is a private dam or a private impoundment for the purposes of being able to provide maintenance and repairs to that. And there is a specific issue in the city that kind of generated that. And if you have questions more about which property, I would suggest discuss with the city attorney. The, the other difference between these two pieces of legislation, since one of them is specifically for Newport News, it would be considered special legislation, which would require a two-thirds vote to pass, whereas the other applies to any locality. So it would only require a majority.
Where is the lake you were talking about?
I'm sorry ma'am.
Where is the lake that you were just talking about?
Lake Queen Anne.
Lake Queen Anne.
Oh, okay. Which is where? I don't know where it is.
Central District.
Yeah, but where in the central district? What is, what street is it near?
It's near Cleantown.
It's Hiddenwood. I mean, it's Central District Lake.
Cusman Long, it's your lake?
Well, no, it's not my lake. It's the lake. We have about, I went to live in a lake.
Because there's a lake behind my house that's called Hawks Pond.
There's about 38 lakes in the Central District that are privately owned. And if they, um, this particular lake-
Is it in Hiddenwood?
It's in Hiddenwood, Hiddenwood. It's Hiddenwood.
It's in James Landy.
James Landy? Okay.
There are 38 lakes in Central District that are, are feeling this, this issue where they, uh, they need a special tax to be put on top of their homes so they can get made this on their, their property. This is what this will afford.
Well, it has been done by the city and they still want the city to do it.
No, that's, the city can't do it.
I know, I know. But they have in the past.
We've done a few things in the past to help them, but with Lake Queen Anne, when the private development was done in the late 60s or early 70s, there were deed restrictions placed on all the, the lots adjoining the lake, that they would be subject to an assessment to maintain the private impoundment. And over the last 50 years, they haven't had one. And so nothing was major was done to maintain the dam.
Yeah, I remember.
Okay. So the next item is in relation to the Workers' Compensation Act. Currently, as it is written, there is a date in there, July 1, 2014. If anything that happened before that date, people can file claims on, they can go back through their files and find an old bill and send it to us and make us pay it. And so by removing that date, essentially you're creating a uniform statute of limitations for all workers comp claims to be one year, just like anything that happened after that date. That's the request.
Yeah. What happened was it, it used to be under the workers comp claim, you would just use a, there wasn't a statute of limitation for healthcare providers to submit bills. Um, starting about nine and a half years ago, it went into effect that they had to submit them within one year. But it was grandfathered, the older bills were grandfathered. But we're getting hit now with bills from 25 and 30 years ago that we don't have any records on. And, and the way the old system was, there's a presumption that the bill's correct and we have to rebut it. But we don't have the, the, the employers don't have the documentation from 25 and 30 years ago to rebut those. If, if they were going in civil court, it would be a five-year statute of limitations. So they're getting 10 essentially if this goes through, but-
So moving on to the charter changes, there are three proposed charter changes. The first is to add a provision for recall of council members. The, the second is the institution of a two-year, uh, term limit for elected mayors. And the third would be to add a provision such that the mayor would be able to take emergency powers in the event of a state, local, or federal declared emergency that impacts the city.
Example of that is what?
And, and after, I know there's been a lot of, uh, I was here last year when the recall, uh, talk happened. We'll, we'll talk about this after the whole presentation. I know there's, we'll talk about it after.
Okay. The next item are budget amendments. We do have three budget amendments this year. The first would be additional money for our Coastal Virginia STEM Learning Hub. We were successful in '23 of getting $500,000 from the state of Virginia. And with that money, uh, we were able to initiate, to perform 21 STEM programs with about 11,000 participants, which is amazing. So the request now would be to get an additional million and a half dollars each year, which would allow the programs not necessarily to triple, but to be more extensive in length to add apprenticeships and, and internships and those types of things. So it would really allow us to expand that. This is in partnership with Brooks Crossing and the Virginia Peninsula Community College. The second budget request is a $900,000 request, which would be basically gap funding for a project that you all saw in the capital improvement plan. We're renovating the municipal building to expand, expand the courtrooms from one to three to accommodate the additional number of jury trials. Uh, the number of jurors we have had since 2021, when the new law took effect, has increased by 267%. So we simply do not have the capacity. And while there is $5.5 million in the plan to pay for that project, the project is estimated at about 6.4 million. So this would essentially be just a request for that gap funding from what kind of turned into an unfunded mandate because of the state's change in regulations. The third-
I got a question. So will that gap fund also include the sheriff funding as well? I mean, those, those courtrooms will have to be supported by a new sheriff and then-
So the, the-
Deputy sheriff.
That money is for the project. There's nothing specific in the request that says it would do this, this or the other. It's really just to be able to complete the entire project.
So now Jerry, what was the new ruling that caused this to increase the jury trial?
There was a bill in 2020, 20, yes, 2020 and during the special session. It was SB 5007 and it allowed, uh, someone to choose to have a jury trial, but a judge sentencing. Previously, Virginia was one of the only states where if you had a jury trial, you had a jury sentence. And that often led to much more extensive sentences than if a judge sentenced you. And the thinking at the time was that it wouldn't impact the number of requests for jury trials and it, it certainly has here. I know in two other localities it also has. Uh, Roanoke and Williamsburg also have been, have seen quite the increase in the number of requests for jury trials.
Wow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
These are the increase in criminal jury trials. The civil jury trials, there's so many criminal jury trials that it's hard to get a civil jury trial scheduled because under speedy trial rules, criminal trials have to come first. So the public defender's office with this change in the statute is requesting criminal juries on just about every case.
It's, it's, it's backed up.
Wow. So our third budget request has to do with the Port Host Communities Revitalization Grant Fund, which was created just for the five port host cities to allow us to renovate port-related structures. And the definition of port-related structure is very wide open. So this pot of money is wonderful for doing all sorts of prod, projects for revitalization. However, it's only a million and a half dollars and there are five port host localities. So the money doesn't really go very far. And unlike the Aid to Local Ports grant, this is a line item of its own in the budget. So we can easily ask for more money. The Aid to Local Ports program, which is something that Newport News often uses, is part of the Transportation Trust Fund. So it's not as simple as just asking for money, more money to be added there. So this was a, a much easier ask and if we are successful, whatever goes into increasing this line item would only be available to the port host cities. We do have one new policy position this year. Several of the things we'll talk about later are existing things that we kind of talk about every year. This one has to do with, um, in the Southeast community, there have been a lot of smaller 25-foot lots that have been put together with other 25-foot lots to make 50-foot lot or we've had some 37-foot lots. We've all, all these small lots, some of them are the result of just being too small to be buildable. Some of them have been abandoned. Some of them are the result of delinquent taxes. And in, in that case, the treasurer can create those lots and put them up for auction. But the current statute says that he can't auction anything with a greater value than $25,000. Well, we all know what's happened with real estate market and so now all these lots are assessing at far more than 25,000. Um, I'm told the average is around 37,000. And so the Treasurer's Association is going to request legislation to raise that cap in the statute to $40,000. So we were asked to support that by our local treasurer.
But the only thing I do have to say about that as it relates to if it's going to be in a, um, a, 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 a community that, um, it's, it's challenged, like the lower part of the Southeast. Because if you take the threshold up for the lots, even though the real estate is going up in different areas, I still, I still know that so many times if we build in the area, it's still, properties can still sit awhile because, because you have those factors of people may not be able to credit qualify, they may not be able to income qualify. So I would like to at least, um, add that before we look at the increase because as you price the lot up, that means the builder is going to have to come with more money, builder or developer is going to have to come with more money. So it could end up being a challenge in an area that we really want to get new homes there because affordability.
I don't believe the change that they're requesting actually goes to the value of the lot itself. All it does is it gives the treasurer the ability to auction a lot that is higher than 25,000. Right now, the treasurer can auction off at a judicial sale, a lot that is worth up to 25,000. But all of these lots are now worth more than 25,000, so he cannot auction them off. So this wouldn't actually-
You can, but you have to jump through a court case. They have to have an attorney take the case to court. There's no limit on that. If the taxes are two years delinquent, you can take it to a tax sale. What this allows the treasurer to do is go directly to an auction. It's just that the treasurer doing it, they give notice and they, and it's usually a vacant lot.
Based on what they owe?
Yeah.
What the owner owes.
Okay. But what happens is when we go through these cases, because we'll do somewhere, the city wants to get title to some of these delinquent properties. Um, and, and the cost, when you have to go through the court case, you know, the Daily Press is getting several thousand dollars for notice ads. I just signed off on a Guardian Ed Lightings bill for like almost $2,000 on one of these cases. So we're spending, if we have to jump through that other provision, we're spending seven, eight, $10,000 to try to get a vacant lot to, either to a juror, to an auction or to just for the city to get title to it. This allows the treasurer to take a vacant lot under a certain amount and just give the proper notices and then take it to auction without having to jump through.
To pay any additional fees? Okay.
Yeah. So the assessment doesn't really change.
Oh, well, thank you for that.
The, the rest are standing policy positions. I won't spend a ton of time on these because most of you are familiar with them, but if you have any-
Can you, can you speak on the short-term rentals?
Yes, yes.
I know that's a whole thing.
Number one.
Thank you.
So, um, short-term rental, uh, is a huge issue at the state level. There's really not a, a agreed upon solution because a lot of the localities have ordinances that regulate them. Some localities do not. Some localities have very reasonable ordinances. Some localities have very unusual ordinances and require a lot of things. And so, um, over the last several years, there's been some discussion. The folks at companies like Airbnb want obviously to not have restrictions on their, on their service or product, depending on how you look at it. The realtors have proposed, and, um, if we manage it for them, then we should be exempt from local ordinances. There are people who feel as if there should be, um, like one statewide set of regulations because that way businesses do not have to figure out patchwork regulations. And so there are all kinds of, uh, discussions about what may or may not happen with short-term rentals in the upcoming session. There's been a lot of criticism directed at localities, um, around short-term rentals and all things housing because of our zoning and our, our different rules and regulations and fees. And so, um, this could be the hot topic. There's, there's been, you know, you, some of you remember when it was, you know, wireless towers and Uber. There's been a hot topic. So this may be this year's hot topic in terms of what will the state do in terms of short-term rentals? Will they regulate? Will they allow us to regulate? Will they erode our authority? But the big push here is to maintain local authority. Because as we all know, every community is different. Newport News is not like with county. You know, you want to be able to do what's best. And our ordinance in particular, being something that was a product of local stakeholder groups, really reflects the people in Newport News and what they would like to see. And I think that's very, uh, important part of this discussion is that in communities where they have worked with the people who live in the community to develop the ordinance, you know, it's hard to imagine that being overridden by people in Richmond who may never have even been to your community. So that's number one. Number two is the machinery and tools and BPO taxes is, it's been a bill every-
I'm sorry Jerry, really quickly.
Sure.
So, um, you just made me think about when we were at VML. Um, this is something that, uh, other localities have also, uh, signed off on or are hoping the same will happen, where we will have local control. So it's not just us, um, asking for it. And so, uh, well, I think also at the end of this presentation, um, VML also has verbiage on this in which as a member of it, we're basically saying that we already signed off to, we agree with it. But, um, that's it basically. Just wanted to highlight that VML piece.
Absolutely. Um, and one of the things you often hear from people on a committee after something, a bill goes through is, well, we didn't hear from your locality. It's like, well, we stand with VML. But it's very important for the individual localities to get up there too. So that it's, even though VML represents us and we are, we support them and they support us, the more people who stand up to speak about something, the more of an impact you make on the people on the committee. The next one is the machinery and tools and BPO taxes. I believe just about every year up in Richmond, there's been a bill to eliminate, cap, shrink, or otherwise, uh, you know, tinker with, with them. And as many of you know, they are a large part of our general fund. They make up about 8% of our general fund. Together, the two last fiscal year were not quite, almost $50 million, which is about 23, over 23 cents on your real estate tax dollar. So if you wanted to offset the loss of these taxes, you would have to increase your real estate tax by almost 24 cents, which I'm sure would not be terribly popular. So we always, always try to protect our local revenue streams. The next is the Virginia Military Community Infrastructure Grant Program. And why this is in here is because we were one of the first communities in Virginia to advocate for this. It is money that the state puts aside to use as match for federal grants that, um, are in support of a military installation. Of the first $5 million the state ever allocated for this program, we got 1.1 to match our Harwoods Mill Improvement Project. And so the, the case has been made, all of the money that was in the original allocation is gone and we should have more. And so the secretary is going to ask for about $5 million a year and we're supporting that request. And we'd also like to see the money be available for small local projects, not necessarily just match. Right now, you can only use it to match a federal grant. And while that's good and it helps you leverage other money, uh, there are projects that are, you know, little projects that can be done if, if there were more money available. So we've, we've said we would support that, council willing. Um, the next is the Additional Resources for School Construction and Modernization. This is the 1% bill you heard about, which would allow you, if you wanted to, to assess an extra 1% sales tax specifically to build schools or upgrade schools. Um, it is not a mandate, you would not have to do it, but that bill most likely will be back this year at the General Assembly.
Can I ask you to go back?
Yes ma'am.
The machinery and tools, uh, and BPO taxes. The shipyard at one point wanted to stop paying any machinery and tools. What is the status of that situation?
I do not know of any current challenge from the shipyard on machinery and tools taxes.
How about it, Mr. Manager?
I'm, I'm not aware of such a position, Dr. Woodbury.
I'm not aware of such a position, Dr. Woodbury.
Well, there was a controversy and they were trying to get out of paying us the machinery and tools a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Right now, it's an assessment issue that we're trying to work through, but we can talk offline about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The next set of policy positions are unfunded mandates. We oppose. We support economic development and redevelopment incentive programs. There were several specifically named in our package, one of them being the enterprise zone. Newport News is either the top or one of the top users of enterprise zones every year. And we ask for some sufficient funding, which means that they would always make sure there was enough money in there to pay all of the grants. Because when there's not, they have to prorate them and people don't get what they were promised and it's just not as effective. So, some sufficient funding for that one. Support for public safety and community violence initiatives. Support for increased funding for road maintenance for port host cities. We are one of the port host cities that benefits from road maintenance funding because there are more trucks and they're heavier trucks and they really tear up the road. Unfortunately, the million dollars that's been in the budget for that, that's been in there since 2006, has never been increased. So, we are partnering with Norfolk and Portsmouth to ask for more money in that line item.
And then, just to ask for an additional million? I think I read some too.
Yeah. We probably should ask for a lot more, to be honest. But, you know, an additional million is as reasonable as we can get. And then, the final thing that is in the, it's on the back of your actual legislative draft, and it's also in the presentation, noting all of our state and regional partners. In lieu of repeating every policy position for every agency, what we have done is, these are the things that the city is a member of. We vote on these things. And so, unless otherwise specified, support the legislative agendas of these regional partners. Any other questions?
So, I'll just jump in here so that we can have sort of the discussion. So, in front of you, there's two packets. We have the slide deck, which goes into a very quick background. And then, you actually have this packet, which talks about each single, can you go back to the charter change? That's probably the spiciest of maybe B-Pole, I don't know. Perfect, thank you. So, this is, so, the way that it's been done in the past is, you know, the mayor with Jerry come up with sort of charter changes and we like spring it on people and then there's a lot of discussion. Then, things don't get passed, things do get passed. And so, I'll go through each of these one-on-one and then I'll talk about sort of, I think, a good step for the council to take a look at. So, as it currently stands, I'll go four through six. So, I do think that everyone who's elected should have the ability to be recalled if there's a certain threshold that's reached. It's very, very complicated. There's like a page in the bio, but quickly, I think everyone, whether it's mayor, higher, all the way down, everyone should have the ability to be recalled due to actions. Number two, I think when you serve as a mayor, I think every generation should have their chance to sort of remake the city. And so, I believe in term limits. My whole purpose of running was sort of to give voice to people who haven't been heard. And so, I think you can get that done in two terms. It doesn't affect city council. It only affects the mayor, would be two terms. And then, number three would be, I think-
Two four-year terms?
Yes, sorry. Two four-year terms, just for mayor. And then, for number six, I think we saw what happened in January with Richneck. And there's a reason why there's emergency powers exist in Norfolk and Williamsburg, a city that is bigger and a city that is smaller. That being said, there's a lot of nuances that go into charter changes. For instance, let's say we were to, let's say we're all in agreement and we want to pass something at the council level, well, that wouldn't affect school board. And so, that wouldn't actually be a fair thing. There's been some pushback on, well, the mayor should be unlimited. Okay. And then, there's a pushback on number six, well, maybe you could have, in the future, you could have a mayor that's unqualified, that just takes powers into something crazy. So, I think what is best is a lot of cities, they have an independent, citizen-led charter commission process. So, that way, it's people appointed by city council. And that way, it's an independent third party and they recommend, hey, these are what we recommend for charter changes. And then, we have the ability to ratify. We can think about it this week. I would love to get some closure on it in the next two weeks. But there's a lot of nuances that go into charter changes. And I think what's happened in the past, if you look at our charter, it's almost patchwork. I mean, it's what happens when you take a city and a county and you sort of smash them together. It's like you cross out a line, you add a line, like someone took a comprehensive look at the entire charter. So, I know we're not all going to agree on different ones. Probably, I think number four is probably the most contentious. But I do think if we take some time this week, then we can come back and maybe make a resolution or a motion next, in the next two weeks, to say we want to establish some sort of independent charter review commission by citizens. But that's my thought. I'll turn it open to council.
So, is the idea that the charter recommendations will go into 2025 legislative priorities after councils look at them?
Sorry, for these three, or what are you asking?
Well, you're saying to establish a charter committee.
Yep.
The recommendations of the charter committee come back to council and then we would bring it to a 2025 legislative priorities. That's the goal.
Yeah, correct. And we can look at the cadence. We could look at, I know I've been given the, maybe a lot of new commissions to create. But I think that's the fairest thing. It's independent thing. To be honest, a lot of cities have it. I'm surprised we don't have it. But if we don't do that, then it's just sort of like people get in a room and say, I think this would be a really good idea. I've talked to Mayor Price a few weeks ago and there's a lot of concern about limiting the mayor to two terms. And so, there's, you get sort of pros and cons on both. But I think an independent review is probably going to be the best. Because I don't think right now, we're going to agree on the ability to recall members of council. I don't think we'll come to a consensus. But I do think if we have the ability for citizens to say, to look at the whole charter and recommend things, then we can ratify or disapprove as needed. So, that's my thought, but open it up to others.
Well, you know, I think, I think we look at our neighbor Hampton and what has happened with one of their council members.
Put the mic up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I said, if we look at our neighboring community and the outrage that some of the council members have felt, have felt about one of their members and some of his activities. And they have no recourse. I mean, they've condemned him or they've censured him or whatever you want, but they have no recourse to recalling. And so, I think that's a perfect example of what the kind of committee that you're talking about to help with a situation like that. Because he has been condemned, but there's absolutely nothing they can do about it. And I'm sure you all know the one I'm talking about.
Yeah. And I think the way that I look at this, when Jerry and I-
Crafted.
Crafted this was, I think that people that are elected, they should be, they should have the agency to get the job done, number one. Number two, they should be held accountable and held to a higher standard. And then, number three, that doesn't go on forever. They have the, it's like a fiduciary responsibility. You have, at least for the mayor, you have your eight years and then you pass it on to the next one. Because I think what happens is, and this is not negative of our city, but people stay for a very long time and then there's no bench and then there's a sort of gap. And so, that's how we tried to structure it. We can talk this week on phone calls about which one, probably more like five and six, that we can get through this one. But I think for the recalling of elections, that's probably going to be through an independent commission that we're going to have to start at a later date. So, ma'am-
Yeah, because that's what I did want to say about the, number four, the recall elections of the city council members, is because two different, I think there needs to be, if we adopt that, I think it needs to be looked at throughout each locality as to, you know, what has happened since they have the process. Because I do remember in Portsmouth, you know, somebody, some people were just mad, you know, racially mad because of a black mayor and some of the decisions. So, that, you know, people were few to start the recall process for that. And then, you look at places like what happened in Virginia Beach last week at that council meeting. They were there till midnight because in that city, those people, the majority of people at that meeting did not condone affordable workforce housing in the city. So, will you recall council members because they voted to have affordable housing? So, I'm nervous about that one because everybody, each person has different views on what's should be condemned and what should not. So, my careful movement on that is because something that I may look at is great, like affordable housing and workforce housing, I could actually, if the constituency does not like it, I could actually get recalled for housing. So, I think we need to make sure we open our minds as we look at this.
No, agreed. And once again, personally, I think everyone should have the ability to get recalled. My actually biggest sticking point, and if it came to a vote, I would actually vote against it, is because, like I said before, there's no provision for school board. So, it would be this sort of like weird, only city council. It'd be the same thing for ranked choice voting. I believe in ranked choice voting, but we could only do it at city council and it'd be, you couldn't do it for school board. So, until we're able to get the things to match, and I think a charter commission review outside of council, I think that's the way to do it. We'll make some calls this week and get back in two weeks with some sort of resolution. But ideally, we'll probably make a motion in two weeks to create that charter commission. Timeline TBD. Anything else? Thanks, Jerry. We really appreciate it. I think next up, we have some really, really good news. We've been holding it for a little bit. I'm going to let Beau get up there and pull up the slide deck. But to give a sort of context to this, so, I was able to participate in the Bloomberg-Harvard program, what's that, a few weeks ago? Yeah, back, it's been a long year, back in August. And the mayor was able to select two individuals, key members of the team, that are able to go up to do the program. And then, together, the mayor and then those two individuals apply for a track. And we'll talk about the track we applied for. I do want to give a shout out to Alan. So, normally, I would have said Alan, but he was the acting city manager and he had a lot on his plate. And so, we're going to get you on the backend. We're going to send Alan to National League of Cities with council. So, I won't be going. You guys have fun, have fun with Alan. But I decided to send Beau and Allison because I wanted, you know, someone from the manager's office to go, so that was Beau. And then, I sent Allison, who's the head of our HR, because I think when you look at smaller cities, especially in Virginia, I think we have a human capital talent management issue. And that sort of goes across all different silos and departments. And so, I wanted the manager's office there, but also, I wanted someone from the human resources talent management side. And so, we all got in a room with Alan and we applied for one of three tracks. And now, I'll give it to Beau to talk about what we've got.
I think I'm on slide four now.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got excited.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of, honorable members of council. As the mayor just mentioned, we've had the opportunity over the past several months to engage in several of the Bloomberg opportunities out there. Each year, the Bloomberg Institute for City Leadership that partners with Harvard selects 40 mayors from around the world. This year, Mayor Jones was selected. And after he attended his portion there in New York, Allison and I got to go up for about four days and sit down with some Harvard professors and about 80 others from these 40 different municipalities. So, we had the opportunity for that. As part of that, we went into the City Leadership Initiative. They had three tracks, as the mayor mentioned, data, innovation, and cross-collaboration. For us, we came back and we looked at cross-collaboration and that's the one we submitted for. So, under the cross-collaboration track, and I want to emphasize this, any one of those tracks that they would be looking to award to the different cities, they described it as this. They described it as building a muscle that you can then apply against other problem sets, issues, or initiatives that you have within the community. We, as the mayor said, selected the cross-collaboration track. And here's some of the details along with that. But it is, it's about gaining the skills, getting the key frameworks out there, the concepts that can be applied, not only to this one that we're going to apply towards, but to future ones. It's about us learning this process, using a valid process to do that. And again, it's about building the muscle. So, what we applied for was something that is absolutely strategic and a priority for us, and it was the downtown revitalization. So, this is how this, the cross-collaboration track will go. First, it will be the mayor and about eight members from the city staff. And then, we'll reach out to, we'll identify certain stakeholders that are out there. Those stakeholders, in terms of the downtown, may be developers, there'll be the EDA, it will be the shipyard, it will be the Navy, other entities like that, that we want to come in and partner as part of this cross-collaboration track. We also are going to identify some focus areas there. I put a few of those here, but many of those being the housing, the green space activation, those types of elements that we can focus on through this cross-collaboration group. And that's really the intent of this. So, this goes on about, we're actually going to meet with the Bloomberg-Harvard team later on this week, actually on Friday. And so, it's a misprint there, but it's this Friday that we're going to sit down with them and go through this and they will give us some additional details as part of this. Now, this process that we'll be doing is about nine months. This is the process timeline, so some specifics there. Of course, we'll have the in-city visits coming up here in the next couple of months. Then, we'll have the virtual sessions that will be over the course of about three months, a brief timeline back in New York, and then follow up with some of the other virtual meetings to hammer this out. But again, this is about collecting a group from the cross-collaboration track approach, getting entities together, and seeing how we can make a significant impact across the city and through the community. Any questions? I know I kind of went through that a little bit quick, but any questions in terms of the cross-collaboration track?
Who's on your committee?
Well, we have not deemed, we have not designated who is on the committee yet. We're going to talk to, like I said, we're going to talk to Harvard-Bloomberg on Friday, get their kind of guidelines and their recommendations on who from the community should be as part of this. And then, we'll do the selection of that and we'll start reaching out to partners at that time. Anything to add?
The only thing I would add is, I know Councilman Long has done some calls with Bloomberg around our housing strategy. But this is a really big deal for the city. So, I think the only other city in Virginia that was part of this program was Mayor Tuck a few years ago, two years ago, I think.
I think it was two.
And so, Hampton selected how they were going to reduce gun violence. So, what you basically get is you get a bunch of professors and you get about, I'll make up a number, $1 to $2 million of free consulting work. And they're going to have, like, you know, a lot of these Bloomberg, Harvard fellows and professors will come down to Newport News and they will look at, we picked downtown. I think downtown is the future. Once we're able to maximize downtown, I think the city's going to be on a strong footing financially, professionally, everything. And so, it's the ability to have million dollars of free casework to come in and get it done. I think you see what it did in Hampton with how they reduced their gun violence. I'm looking forward, we thought about gun violence, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to copy Hampton and we thought that the economic development of downtown would make a really good project. Do you want to add anything from your Bloomberg experience?
Well, I was going to mention it during the comments. I'll wait till that.
Then, I'll be followed by Marlon McDaniel, the Office of Innovation, and he's going to go over another portion of Bloomberg called What Works.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that haven't had the unfortunate misfortune of meeting me yet, Marlon McDaniel, Innovation Program Manager out of the city manager's office. And I'm here to talk about another Bloomberg program. I feel like I should be wearing a Bloomberg shirt, representing them today. Over the first, you know, 90 days of my tenure here, I've had an opportunity to participate in a lot of conversations. A wonderful event last week at J-Lab where they announced the High Performance Data Center. Data is the future for how we do work within private sector, public sector, all the sectors in which we operate as a community. And this Bloomberg What Works Cities program is our way as a city in participating in this national and international conversation to join leading municipalities in this space. Cities like, I'm going to call out Denver, Denver, Los Angeles, Washington DC, Boston, Massachusetts. Cities doing great work around how they leverage data to improve the lives of their community members. This What Works Cities certification program, what is it? It's like, I would, I know you got a bond conversation coming up here soon. I would say it's analogous to your credit rating that the city has, in the sense that it's a very rigorous program that doesn't necessarily evaluate financial procedures and practices and stewardship. This is our way of evaluating our data management, how we collect data, how we use it, how we leverage it to inform the services that we deliver to our community members. This certification program is, there are a couple of them out there in the industry. This Bloomberg one is the gold standard in the marketplace right now. It's evidence-based, it's been validated over several years now. And there are really three tiers to it. Gold, silver, bronze, gold, gold, silver, and plat- bronze, gold, gold, silver, and platinum. And the intention here is to pursue, pursue at least one of them to the extent that it's creating results for our community. So, some of the benefits, why do this? This program really is a model, it's a best practice framework about how cities, municipalities harness data to, one, better understand the needs of your community, two, prioritize taxpayer resources, and three, promote transparency and accountability across government. And on the left-hand side of the screen here, you see some of the highlights from a recent Deloitte study about this program and its impact it's had with those that have gone through it. So, we'll be embarking on this journey. One, not to only win an accolade, but the plaque is very large. I'm not sure if it's gonna fit in Mr. Archer's or Mr. Mayor's filing cabinet if we were to get it. But also bolster the reputation, reaffirm our reputation as a breakthrough community, Newport News being a breakthrough community. So, that said, timeline on this. We've been doing some legwork up until now. Plan here is to start in January, action some of those milestones that you see on the top of the slide there, and wrap up in May. Knock on wood, hopefully with a certification, but that might be a longer process. But at the end of it, we'll at least know what we need to do as a city to continue to refine our data management practices, whether it's around balanced scorecard and performance analytics, open data, results-driven contracting, or others. So, some of the key partners that we'll be working with to help action this project over the next few months are William &amp; Mary's University's Department of Public Policy. We'll have a team of 10 to 15 graduate students, as well as faculty members, supporting us in reviewing our policies, procedures, the good work that we already potentially have in place. I know we've got open data scattered throughout the city in various elements and forms and fashion. And then they'll help us develop evidence-based strategies to move the needle towards certification. And then lastly, of course, Bloomberg has an extensive network of technical assistants, Johns Hopkins, Center for Government Excellence, as well as Results for America. We'll be tapping into those resources as well to get this done.
Just one thought. Can we also just reach out to Christopher Newport and see if, with the Watson Center, we're able to like, you know, they're in our city. So if we could use CNU, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I did due diligence around reaching out to our local universities and happy to shake that tree again.
Thank you.
Well, what about, I know we're, I know CNU is here, but because, but how did it come, William &amp; Mary is already connected to the Bloomberg network? Is that, are you came up with William &amp; Mary?
I proposed this project. I set up meetings with local universities in the area to talk about the Innovation Office and some of the potential work to be taking place in the near future here. And William &amp; Mary was the most receptive to assigning resources to this initiative within our timeline.
Okay.
That's very political. I appreciate it.
Owen did a great job at prepping.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, thank you, guys. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Miller to wrap us up here with the Bloomberg projects.
And as Owen comes up, so the reason that we're doing so many Bloomberg programs is, so number one, it's the only organization that has a lot of resources that is only, its only purpose is to help cities and mayors. Like, that's the goal of the entire program. And they offer, I'll make up a number, 20 to 30 different programs. And it's sort of like, it's like the mob. Once you're in, so once like, we did the program in August, you're able to access everything. So if you, so I know we've applied, you can apply without being in the program, but the odds are you're not gonna win. So now that we've done the program a few months ago, now we're able to apply to everything. That's why Jennifer and I were in DC at the Bloomberg City Lab last week. We'll be back in a few weeks. The idea is to take advantage of the entire thing, because once, it's like, you know, like Beau said, it's a year-long sort of process. And once you're out of the program, it's sort of hard to get plugged back in. So, I know Mayor Tuck is going to Dubai and going to a few other places, but Hampton has taken full advantage of it. We should too as well.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Is there a cost to this?
It's, yeah, the best part is it's all free.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I think you touched on a number of the things that I think you'll see from me. I'm kind of hitting cleanup, so to speak, for our Bloomberg initiatives today. I'll touch on one, a highlight one, I should say, and then, you can't hear me.
Yeah, you might have to push that.
I think it's off, so.
Maybe push the thing, the speaker, the microphone up.
I'll try to get a little closer to it.
Right.
So, I'll be sharing primarily about the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Initiative, but I'll also touch on a number of other initiatives. As the mayor mentioned, there's quite a few out there as well. So, the first one is a brand-new initiative from Bloomberg and also really a team of other organizations that feel strongly are work in this field. And in fact, this Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Initiative actually incorporates three or four of their existing initiatives. Some of them I know that we've already explored, for example. But as the slide shows, in essence, it really is supposed to be, to look at the nexus of two critically important issues, not only here in the city of Newport News, but across the country. One is climate change and investing in climate initiatives. And the other is racial wealth equity, and really trying to turn the needle on that as well. And so, this is an opportunity, the city has done some work, I think it's fair to say, in both of these areas previously. But this is an opportunity to look at them together through both lenses at once, and also be a little more intentional about how we do that. And so, the ultimate goal is obviously to improve the lives of the residents in our community, particularly those that are most affected by these issues. So, how does this actually occur? What does this actually look like? So, it would be essentially a three-year program. So, this is a pretty long commitment. What our friends with Bloomberg and then the consultants that have actually already hired to work with us, application coaches is the way to describe them. What they do is they help you, the city, formulate a plan to address these issues. They assign an I-team, essentially a team of not only Bloomberg staff, but consultants, technical assistants in this field, to help us implement a plan over the course of these three years. It is, I think, excuse me, themes you will see throughout all these Bloomberg initiatives is it provides a couple of things. One is additional capacity, beef up what staff is already doing, bring in technical assistance from experts in the field. And then, the final component of this, which is obviously clear in Beau's presentation, but also I think you'll see it here, is really foster collaboration. And so, based on that, you know, they provide a team of these experts over the course of three years. They would assist city staff, but also our community partners that we involve in this initiative. And so, we've touched on it with some of the other initiatives, you know, William &amp; Mary for some of the work that Marlon touched on. We have actually already engaged CNU, Hampton University, in terms of this potential initiative. They are certainly interested in it. We're continuing those conversations, what that actually looks like formulating that, those partnerships. And then also, we've had some initial discussions with our neighbors, the city of Hampton, who, as the mayor indicated, are also pretty heavily involved in some of these Bloomberg initiatives, and think that there's an opportunity to pursue the American Sustainable Cities Initiative as well. We are both fortunate to be in a position of having made it through the initial round. I guess I can turn to my next slide for that. Help me out. Help me out.
Cut it off.
Thank you. We know it's gonna happen at least once. Thank you. So, here's the timeline, actually, for the process. So, we found out about this opportunity in August. There was a pretty quick turnaround for an initial application, which was September 1st. At this point, we've already had assistance from Bloomberg and the application coaches. We were fortunate enough to get that application in. We moved ahead in the process. We're one of currently, I think, about 25 to 30 localities that remain in this. We currently are working with Bloomberg. I know the mayor had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Got an opportunity to chat with them then at that point.
More like an interview.
An interview. Interview. I think that's the proper term that they described, right? So, there was an interview and also continued dialogue. We, at the staff level, have a meeting with Bloomberg and the team this coming Friday as well, to find out a little bit more about what it looks like. This is all preparing us, including those partners that I mentioned, for an application that would be due right before Thanksgiving. Hopefully, fingers crossed, Bloomberg likes what they see, and then we would proceed and advance out of that. If so, we'd be notified after the turn of the year, and then that's really the process when this I-team would start assisting us. And they've described it even then, as an opportunity to work with them and kind of further refine what we're doing. And just to give you a sense of what some of the initial ideas that we've thought about, as I said, some of them kind of continue the work that we've already been doing, but maybe a little more intentional. Workforce development, for example, particularly in the southeast community. Some of our flood mitigation efforts, southeast community, but also in other parts of Salters Creek and other areas, low-lying areas throughout the city. So, I mean, these are some opportunities that we think we can do a lot of good, advance some of the existing programs that we're already doing. So, hopefully, we will hear more good news in the spring. But so far, things seem to be going pretty well. We're anxious to see where this kind of new program takes us. So, next up, all right, stand by, Chris. Okay. So, next up, in addition to some of those innovative opportunities that Beau, Marlon, and I have touched on already, Bloomberg philanthropies for years have been doing a lot of things related to kind of the arts and cultural side. And so, the city has looked at and applied for some of these opportunities in the past. We have applied for one this past spring. We're hopeful, and a waiting word on that should be sometime this fall. Once again, I think you'll see the theme, it really ties in with a lot of the good work that we're already doing. In this case, potentially even ties in with the first Bloomberg initiative that Beau touched on as well. So, this would build off of some of the good work that we've already done in our Yar district, some of the murals that you've seen throughout the city. And essentially, it continues the art, actually asphalt art, so in Old 23rd Street, right there, and cross from, cross from our neighbors, across from City Hall. In addition to this one, I did want to mention just a couple others. The mayor touched on one of the additional Bloomberg opportunities already, the City Lab Conference, which occurred last week. We had staff there. They're bringing a lot of great things back. Staff will also attend Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Conference coming up in New Orleans in two weeks. So, Mayor, you missed out on that one.
I can't make it.
Yeah. And then finally, just another opportunity that we've been invited to participate in, Bloomberg Cities Idea Exchange, which once again, you build upon this network, this cohort of other Bloomberg localities, and kind of get to share some of these innovative new ideas. So, that's it for me, for some of the Bloomberg initiatives that we're already participating in, and some of the ones that are out there that we're currently exploring. Just wanted to give you guys kind of a summary of what we're doing. Any questions?
Council, do we have any questions at this time?
Thanks, Owen.
Thank you.
And we'll, I think quickly, we just have one last presentation. Thank you.
Two minutes.
Okay.
So, in preparation for tonight's public hearing on the FY24 bond authorization, and since the majority of council will be experiencing this for the first time, it's important to just remind council on the importance of the, this step of the bond authorization. There are actually three steps in every capital project. First, there has to be an adopted CIP. Thank you, city council, for adopting the FY24 CIP on the September 26th city council meeting. You adopted the first year of a five-year plan. To be able to fund that, we do not have the capacity to fund all $54 million within one year in the annual operating budget. So, we borrowed the money. The city needs the authority given by city council to go borrow the money, and that's the bond hearing you will be considering tonight, is the bond authorization, the second step. And then the final step is each individual capital project that is contained in each CIP is brought back to city council for consideration. It gives city council the last opportunity to affirm that project, for the city to make any adjustments on any funding strategies that may have changed, whether the project expanded or needed additional money, or to substitute projects. So, that's why, after this meeting beginning in November, you will start seeing project appropriations from the FY24 CIP. It gives, the bond authorization gives us many capacities. The first is to approve the projects in the CIP. We cannot move forward with any of the projects until this is adopted. It gives us the ability to borrow the money when appropriate. It doesn't mean we're gonna go out and borrow the money right now. It just lets us have the authority when the market is right, when it's on a cash flow basis, and when we actually need it, to go borrow the money. We can include projects that are not in the CIP. A perfect example was the Scott Center rebuild several years ago was not in our CIP, but we were able to include it in a bond authorization. So, this is, in summary, the FY24 CIP. It's six categories. This year, we do not have a wastewater or sewer project. Those projects will be done by cash capital within the operating budget of the wastewater fund. But these are all the amounts that will be borrowed in each one of those categories for the specific projects in the adopted CIP. So, this year, we have only the FY24 CIP and the bond authorizations. In prior years, if there was a lag in projects, we needed to have additional funding, or we added additional projects, we were able to expand the bond authorization to cover that. But in this bond authorization, this mirrors the general fund projects, including stormwater, for the FY24 CIP. It allows us to borrow when we need it. And the only difference is, bonds are sold in $5,000 increments. So, while the CIP might be $3,696 difference, the bond authorization is rounded to the next $5,000 increments. So, who pays the debt? The general fund will pay 90% of this debt when we actually go borrow. It's, again, we're not gonna go borrow right now. The bonds that we issued in June of 2023 was based on the FY2022 bond authorization. So, we have capacity, we have time. The importance of this, again, is to be able to appropriate projects and move those forward through the design and bid processes. And then the user fee funds will pay $6 million, so 10%. So, $54 million in a nutshell.
In two minutes. We appreciate it.
In two minutes. You're welcome.
Council, do we have, I know we are talking about this before, but do we have any questions? Thank you. I think as we wrap up, we'll do comments, idea suggestion. We'll start on this side this time.
Yeah, I'd add something. We had mentioned before one time that we were gonna have a report for those agencies or organizations that receive community support funding, to see how impactful they are. I was wondering if that's still something that's on the horizon? And then, this year's going by kind of fast, if you haven't noticed. And the summer will be here in, you know, it'll seem like tomorrow. But are we already planning for what we're gonna look at doing for the summer programs? I know we steered away from the STEM program, and just wanted to see if something's in motion to prepare for any program that we might implement in the summertime for the youth program.
Yes, is the answer to both questions. So, we'll provide you with the report on the impact of those organizations that receive community support funding. And we have already established a working committee looking at options for some type, I don't want to categorize it right now, but we are preparing the framework for some type of meaningful summer engagement slash summer employment program. And I will be presented with those ideas in the next week. And then the idea is to use that framework as the initial impetus to bring together a steering or advisory group who could add on to what we have fleshed out and make it truly a collaborative program for the summer. Then you'll find that proposal incorporated in your city manager's proposed operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
And I'd just like to add on to that, as Councilman Harris is talking about that, that as we look at it, I know in previous that as we look at it, I know in previous years, whatever we've done, it seems to kind of come, you know, in June when the students are out of school. Whatever we propose, can we at least put it out there in like March?
Yes.
Looking at March of 2024, so that people can get a chance to get the information and figure out where to sit, parents can figure out where to send their children, or children can figure out where they want to go.
Yeah, yes. In the past, we, we have consistently announced whatever it is that we're going to do in the March timeframe, because you have a orientation process, you have a registration process, you have all those pieces that have to be in place so the program can begin shortly after the end of the school year. So that's very much a part of our thinking.
Okay, thank you.
And then also for the, for, for next summer, I know it was, this year went by very quickly, but just to reiterate what Alan said, we're going to do a full communications push on this so people, you know, before everyone's like, I didn't know about the programs, et cetera, like, that's not going to happen next summer. So it's going to be, Alan's already been working on it. We're going to communicate that to everyone, more than just push it out on social media. It's going to be every rec center, every church, every whatever. We're going to bring back the summer jobs programs in some capacity, but I talked to chief a lot, like, the way that I look at next year, the only two things that I'm focusing on is reducing gun violence and economic development in downtown. Like, everything, I just, that's the two things that I'm going to do. I think, or Councilman Harris brings up a good point, like, summer jobs program will come back, we just got to take a look at how it comes back.
Thank you.
Dr. Woodbury?
Nothing.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to thank the communications staff for helping me dearly with the career fair that we're doing this Friday at Hampton Hills Convention Center. It started off with about 300 students from Newport News in Hampton, now it's grown to 700 students from Newport News, Hampton, and New York Town. So communication has been a dear savior to me, getting out the information and making sure that Newport News looks good. So thank you.
Councilman Long?
Yeah, I just want to update counsel on some initiatives we're doing with housing. We just recently hired a consulting team, Urban Partners and Collaborations with Stromberg Garrigan Associates, SGA, to review our housing needs in the community. Some of the items that they're going to look at is our 10-year housing needs, do we have the correct balance of owner-occupied to rental units? How do we revitalize some of our older neighborhoods? Correct number of housing for employees, technical professionals, housing stock for to support our seniors? As Mayor was talking, Bloomberg Associates did help us out with this, this initiative. They were able to help us formulate having a steering committee led by citizens. So this steering committee led by citizens will help with the consulting team to develop a plan. This is going to be a 10-month study, so hopefully, well, at the end, we should have some kind of recommendation on how we need to address some of our housing needs here in the city. Also, want to mention, after the housing, the homeless conversation was about five action items that came out of a report. One of the items was a website. We do have a website up that you can get some information about homelessness, as well as that video of that night. And hopefully, I'll be reporting out in the next few weeks on the other action items that were part of that homeless conversation. So more to come on that, and that's all I have.
I want to say, Councilman Long, thank you for taking the lead on the Housing First Initiative. I know it's a, it's a very dense sort of topic, but really appreciate you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Colley?
No.
No comments.
I just have two or three quick things. So number one, was able to participate in the City Lab Conference with Jennifer last week. Big takeaway, there was about 100 mayors there from across the, across the globe, and the big push is for AI and machine learning. What, what can that mean for localities? I've talked to Alan in a great deal about it. I don't think a lot of cities, including ours, have the inherent knowledge or capacity right now, but I do believe that generator, or Gen AI is going to be the future. And so I'll be working probably heavily with Innovation Office and with, with Alan on that. I will send out my after-action tonight, but a lot of good learning about how we can improve the lives of our customers, which is the citizens of the city. Once again, we'll make phone calls this week concerning the legislative package and moving forward with that citizen charter commission. This week, I'm going to take a look, we have the first draft of the City Council, the Ethics Handbook, or the guidebook. I'll take a look at that with the attorney. We'll make some corrections. Draft one is done, so it should be out before Thanksgiving. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. And I'm sure we'll, we'll go back and forth, but I'll take the final cut by Friday. And the last thing, going to what Councilman Long was saying, really, really big deal for the city, thank you to Florence and all that work that went into Jefferson Lab and that amazing, that amazing announcement. Sort of part two with that is, we know we're going to have, whenever it gets, you know, built and everything done, that investment's going to include a lot of PhDs, that average salary of $140,000. The question now becomes for the city, like, how do we retain those individuals? So don't just become a city where everyone works there and they live in, you know, Isle of Wight or Suffolk with the big houses. So a big push, I think, for development was, is uptown and how we're going to be able to have some of those housing to attract those individuals. But I agree, I think it, it comes step in step with the housing strategy. But J-Lab was, was a great thing that was started probably four years ago under Mayor Price, but just thank you to everyone to get that done. And now for, for Jerry, we got to make sure we get the 500 million, not 300 million, so let's, we'll work on that to get that. And with that, stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
[inaudible]